Heavenly Father, we humbly implore your blessing on this body that is gathered here for the purpose of seeing your will, trust, peace and prosperity of this county done. We ask with open hearts first that your peace guide these men. May all gathered here uphold goodwill towards others guided by the safe assumption that we all have the same goal, which is what is best for our fellow citizens. May your wisdom guide all deliberation and decision tonight and may your honor be upheld in all things. Pray this son's most holy.
Mr. Perry, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which is state, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in any sense.
We'll have a moment of silence for our U.S. military serving here and abroad. of Supervisors.
Hey Swed, I'd like to nominate Dr. De Loach to remain as our chairman for another year.
Do I have a second nomination for Mr. De Loach to remain chairman for another year? There are none. I have the floor open for nomination for the chair.
I'll nominate Clayton Kendrick for chair.
Do I have a second? I have a motion to nominate Mr. Clayton Kendrick chair for the year and a second. I will call for vote.
I.
It please the board, I'll vote I as well.
And I.
Thank you. Have a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mr. Chair. Now take your seat.
Ready? Thank you all. And next we need to do the election of the vice chairman or take nomination.
I nominate Denise Starwalt for vice chair.
Call for a vote, Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Loach. Please.
I'll abstain.
So?
I abstain.
You abstain. Okay, then um, aye. As have it.
Can we discuss?
Huh?
Can we discuss this?
You want?
Well, I'd just like to say I'm not going to run for supervisor again and usually your vice chairman does training with the chairman to be the chairman next year. So I'll just say that. If you all would like to change that, I don't have an issue with that, but I'm honored and shocked that usually the vice chair is in training to be chairman.
Okay.
So, but thank.
Have a discussion. What's your pleasure, the board? All for a vote? Then I, okay.
We've heard it.
All right, we got, next thing we got is the adoption of the code of ethics. We need a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Call for a vote, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Loach.
Aye.
Mr. Starwalt.
Aye.
And Mr. Perry.
Aye.
And I'll vote I also. And then we need to make a motion and a vote to do the adoption of Robert's Rules of Governance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
My second.
Second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
As have it.
All right. Adoption of Robert's Rules of Governance.
I've got one question on that one before we do it. Can I? It was on the part of the public comment. I don't think I which number that even was, but it had a, it had a three minute limit on it. I don't really like three minute limit if somebody wants to speak.
Well, he certainly, we're certainly set the time wish I would kind of at most of government, but if you want to have a five minute whatever, it's completely up to.
I'd rather not do that. That one and the one right under it where you can't share your time. Because I've been on both sides of that. If somebody's got enough nerve and gumption to come up and speak, I think we ought to hear them. Don't have that one in front of me right off. Those are the only two things I didn't like on it.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Uh huh.
Uh, that basically is that you cannot donate your time to somebody else and I think that's a good rule because it's not, I don't think it's fair if somebody comes here and gets two or three others to give them their time and uh, somebody who's by themselves is stuck with the limit. That's just my.
Any other comment?
That's it.
Okay. Okay.
I agree. I think that's more of a rule of thumb and that situation dictates if a moment is announced before it's started.
Okay. But we don't do the three minutes. We don't, we don't do that. We'll leave the one on sharing the time. That's my. What's yours, Denise?
Whatever, whatever you think, I would say.
Okay. Okay. All right. We'll need a motion on that one then. Rules of Governance. Uh huh. Done it? All right, I'm behind. Y'all will have to be patient with me till I learn all this.
It'll be fine.
All right, then we got a second. Okay, call for a vote, Simmons.
We voted too.
Getting way behind. Okay. All right. The next thing we got is the meeting, meeting schedule for the coming year. We'll need a motion on whether to accept that or not.
I'll move.
Now a second.
Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Next thing we got is the Patrick County Order Supervisor Committee appointments. Amy, you want to read those out? Everybody okay with it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Vote, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Loach.
Aye.
Mr. Starwalt.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
I'll vote I also.
Mr. Chair, will we get a copy of that, please?
Yes, Amy.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Then I guess in regular session, we need to do the approval of the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of amendments to make the agenda for the evening. Uh, one, I need to add under closed session additional personnel of or pre-board members of the Building Inspection Board of Appeals and also to add discussion of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or discussion of open meeting with adversity effect, the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy related to a piece of property located in the town of Spark.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, accept amendment. The agenda is amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
The vote, Simmons.
Aye.
Loach.
Aye.
Mr. Starwalt.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
I'll vote I also. All right, the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion? Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Loach.
Aye.
Mr. Starwalt.
Aye.
Perry.
I wasn't here, so I can't. Don't know.
Okay. All right, and I'll vote I. Approval of bills, claims and appropriations. Any discussion? And so I'll accept a motion.
I make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
We'll call for a vote. Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Loach.
Aye.
Mr. Starwalt.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
I'll vote I also.
All right.
Second, next thing we got is the presentation of a resolution for Mr. Gary De Bruel passing away. I don't have that, so somebody. Mr. Loach, you probably read it better than I can if you don't mind.
It's a memorial resolution of the Patrick County Board of Supervisors recognizing Mr. Gary Glenn De Bruel, uh, whereas, uh, Mr. Gary Glenn De Bruel was born on the 14th day of September 1936 in Buncombe County, North Carolina, and passed away the 24th of December 2022 in Patrick County, Virginia. It is noted that he received his undergraduate decree, degree at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill and his graduate degree from the University of Virginia. He also served our country in the United States Army and the United States National Guard, whereas Mr. Gary De Bruel served five terms in the Virginia House of Delegates from 1968 to 1978. After his term ended, he continued advocacy as a lobbyist and he was a longtime member and Sunday School teacher at Stuart Baptist Church and a 50-year member of Mountain Home Masonic Lodge Number 263. He was buried with military rites by the Patrick County Veterans Memorial Honor Guard and Masonic rites by Mountain Home Lodge Number 263. Therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Patrick County to honor the life of Mr. Gary Glenn De Bruel and to recognize his dedicated service and contributions to the community and his honorable military service to our country on the 9th day of January 2023 in the county of Patrick.
Is anybody from the De Bruel family here tonight?
This is Gary's daughter Tracy and her husband Joel.
Y'all good?
And grandchildren are here.
If you want us to. I wish so. Okay, and next we'll do the public comment period. We've got several signed up for it. If you don't mind, take the stand at the speaker where we can hear you good and just state your name and district you represent. Looks like the first one is Miss Wayne Kirkpatrick.
How y'all doing?
All right.
I'm Wayne Kirkpatrick. Um, I'm in Peters Creek now, I think, since they've redrawn the lines. Uh, Denise, my supervisor. Um, I received, um, a letter and along with several other landowners that, um, kind of circled the proposed site of the Energy X Solar Project coming in and, um, I, I got no issue with it at all, um, as far as solar energy goes. I think renewable energies, we only got one planet, we better start paying attention here. So I think the fact that we're going to go with some renewable energy is a good thing. The concerns are that down the road, when, um, they decommission solar panels or they have to do whatever's going, um, all brand new. Just, uh, I, I hope that your ordinance will take care of those items as far as protecting not just the surrounding landowners, but whoever is actually going to inherit that land down the road. And, uh, I would also like to see, uh, encouragement given to the companies to allow the undergrowth underneath the thing. Always a problem with solar panels. Uh, goats or sheep or some small animals coming in, somebody could, uh, benefit quite well from that grazing if, uh, if that's allowed to, to happen. So, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next one looks like Michelle McCann, Dan River District, about the solar program.
Good evening, I have a question. So your three-minute rule, is it, um, waived for tonight? Yes?
Yeah.
So the thing is, is I could read the email that I sent to you if you would like, or if you just want me to make the comments that, um, I have for this evening, I can do that. I don't know, did all of you receive the email that I sent relating the solar panels?
I, I got it.
Would you like me to read it out loud or would you rather me to just read the comments that I have?
Just, just read your comments.
Just my comments, okay.
Everybody's got to email.
All right, thank you. "I urge you to reject this solar panel proposal based on the concerns I emailed you regarding electronic waste, water pollution, farmland damage and my distrust of this particular company. Many surrounding counties have already rejected it. I urge you to preserve our pristine ecological environment. Every tree we cut down reduces our water table as trees make rain. Every river we pollute negatively impacts all life in the surrounding area and downstream. Patrick County has 17 rivers within her borders, five of which are headwaters flowing into two watersheds. A national park runs through our northern corridor, corridor in the Blue Ridge Parkway. Let's do our part now in helping to protect the future of our rural environment. I urge you to educate yourselves and the citizens of this county regarding electronic waste and our contributions to it. Educate them on the full lifecycle impacts of renewable energy sources. If decommissioning of the electronic equipment was included, the cost would need to be multiplied by at least four. Educate them on the long-term impacts of toxins in our groundwaters and their contributions to its ever-growing volume. Finally, please start lobbying the U.S. government and our state to create a municipal cost-effective solution to manage and contain toxic e-waste. Also, lobby them to hold the renewable energy industry accountable to the same standards as fossil fuel and nuclear energy sources. We've been sold a tainted bill of goods when it comes to the promise that renewable energy sources are the clean answer to our ever-growing energy needs. I feel rural America is the last frontier when it comes to exploiting the natural resources of this country. Instead of searching for more ways to fuel our ever-increasing demand for energy, it's time we each belly up to the bar of accountability and decrease our toxic footprint. If urban centers want more energy to fuel their demand, let them bear the burden in supplying it. The coal industry gutted rural America and the world condemns them. Black lung, abandoned towns and blighted land are all they have left to show for their part in fueling the world's energy needs." I'm from Coal Country. And if you sort years, society will be lamenting the toxicity of hordes of solar panels, windmills and electronic car batteries. If we haven't figured out how to handle toxic waste in the 271 years since Benjamin Franklin discovered electricity, how are we expected to believe science will get it figured out before it kills our planet as we know it today? Who will be to blame then? We are all complicit. In conclusion, I encourage you to say a resounding no to solar panels in Patrick County. I am willing to share my research with whatever agency you choose to educate our citizens. A month ago, I was pro-renewable energy. My research has led me to a different conclusion and I hope it's helped you see a different viewpoint as well. I do have, um, copies of the email and my notes from this evening if you would like that. Thank you.
Next, it's Jim Best, Lord County Meadows, Dan Solar Project.
Listen, we have a little more wiggle room. I'm gonna take this opportunity to say thank you to the county. This marks my 50th anniversary in Patrick County. I came at age 27 to meet Doran Spangler. And, uh, this August I'll be 77. And I feel like I've been really blessed, uh, by the people that I've come in contact here, so many I couldn't possibly name. Um, I feel an urge to pay it forward. I've invested my life here, 30 years at the hospital. Uh, the last time I was before this board, it was to approve the use of the seal, which I carved, uh, to use in the suicide prevention, um, brochure. so many I couldn't possibly name. I feel an urge to pay it forward. I've invested my life here, 30 years at the hospital. The last time I was before this board, it was to approve the use of the seal, which I carved, to use in the suicide prevention brochure. So I share a lot of the same values. My dad raised on a family farm, raised goats and cows and tobacco, and this has been my home. And so even though I live right on the border, my farm actually is on the Patrick County line, my heart's still in Patrick. As a board member of the Virginia Coalition for Human Rights, I'm sharing information from a team of researchers drawn from more than 10,000 Virginia partners. In keeping with my family, personal, and scouting values of honesty and transparency, I've discovered that Energex violates these principles consistently, including their approach to the people of Patrick, Carroll, Grayson, Henry, Franklin, Tazewell Counties, just in southwest Virginia, where I have the opportunity to speak to Boards of Supervisors, zoning, and planning commissions. Based on VCHR experience with Energex solar proposals over the past four years in Virginia, I'd like to recommend a few clarifying edits from my review of the 14 September draft of the Patrick County Solar Ordinance. Energex Renewables is a large foreign company with assets of more than $2 billion. All but eight of their more than 24 proposed solar installations have been denied county permits, and most of those eight have avoided compliance with county laws by buying existing, prior-approved solar installations. The solar industry began its large commercial utility projects in 1990. Those initial projects are now aging out, and landowners and county officials are facing the details and expense of decommissioning and the restoration of thousands of acres of former agricultural lands across the country. I hope you receive the documents, the photographs of the studies that have been done attempting to restore solar panel sites to agricultural use. Have you all received those? Anybody that hasn't seen the slide deck?
Did you send those, or did that come from another?
That came from Jean Tribbles.
Okay.
Yes. Has everybody seen those? I hope you have a chance to look at the studies that document how difficult it is to restore land that's been compacted and where the topsoil has been actually buried. It's almost impossible to restore topsoil to 500-acre property. An example of non-transparency is in the title of this applicant, Berrystone Solar, which is only one of 96 different post office box dresses, post office dresses created by Energex that belies a sense of familiarity and trust among local residents and frustrates attempts to file FOIA requests. Cadmium telluride used in all Energex installations is a human carcinogen and permanent aquatic poison. Studies to the contrary, presented by Energex in public PBR meetings, were funded by the manufacturer of these panels, First Solar. Multiple and extensive independent studies have clearly demonstrated that cadmium telluride can leach from solar panels. And because of the required denuding of the slopes, creating increased erosion and watershed problems to the floodplain that adjoins the South Mayo, all downstream projects for public use could be jeopardized, including the Red Bud Trail for the Mayo River Park planned in Henry County. Energex carelessly, their carelessness and haste have resulted in more than $90,000 in fines, landowner lawsuits, and watershed violations just in the installation phase. That's before any panels are set up, just in preparing the land. Energex has yet to divulge its private contract, that's the quote, for their decommissioning solar panels, and proposes the subtraction of resale value to defray a realistic decommissioning bond. I commend Patrick County for the progress in developing the current draft of the solar ordinance. I hope the notes that I have left, I have shared with the planning committee, discussed this morning, and forwarded to Jason Brown, will also be considered to reject this project. If any of you have not received the document, and I think you all have, solar slides, please let me have any questions, I'd love to come back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Malcolm Roach, Smith River pertaining to internet. Okay, that'll be fine. Let's see. As a matter of fact, I believe that's all that signed up to speak on public comment about the solar, so you want to go ahead and get yours? That'll be fine.
Okay. Based on the... ... prior meeting, we think that this public hearing will be a... ... for the President's hearing. We seem to skip over and move on to other topics. Assistant...
Well, it was advertised to be at 6 o'clock, but it's on the bottom of the agenda, so I haven't seen it. What should we do on that, Mr. Popovich?
Normally advertised public hearing at your meeting starts at 6 o'clock. Doesn't mean the public hearing occurs exactly when it's on your agenda.
All right. Well, if it'd be okay, I think we all just go and finish a public comment and then do it, if that's all right. Okay. Okay. Malcolm?
How are you, Clayton?
Doing good, hope you are.
What'd you get yourself into?
I don't know.
You don't know, right?
I've got it in my head.
Okay. Okay. I'm here to talk about the internet. I went back through Google and dug up some documents about Patrick County and what was coming down the pipeline. Now, we're supposed to have reliable internet to everyone in Patrick County by 2024. I'm asking, is that agenda still a good agenda?
Well, from what we've been told, which I shouldn't answer questions until we get through, but what we've been told, they will have boots on the ground around September of 2023, as far as how long it'll take to finish it.
So September, October, November, so in four months, they going to supply everybody in Patrick County with reliable internet?
They'll get started on it.
They'll get started on it. Okay. Now, when we say everybody in Patrick County have, and the word here is reliable, not CenturyLink, reliable, reliable internet, does that mean everybody?
That's something we'll have to research a little more on.
That's something you'll have to research too. All right. I just want to hold you guys to the, to the agenda. I live off the 57 corridor, and where we are, we have no cellular service at all. None. If the power goes out, we have no internet or cellular service. At that point in time, you can't even dial 911. My neighbor next to me is 87 years old, his wife is 83 years old. If one of them was to be in trouble during a power outage, they would die. So, in the article that I have from July 11, '22, it says, "We're going to provide seamless and reliable broadband access." All right? So that's what we're pushing for. At that same meeting, Sean Atkins said we would have it by the end of this year. So if you don't want to answer my questions tonight, when I come back next meeting, will we have answers?
We can request some answers.
We can request some answers? Can we have Sean at the next meeting so we can ask him?
We'll ask that he be.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bozenmeyer. Thanks much.
Mr. Bozenmeyer, yours on broadband?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bozenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the board regarding the progress of broadband availability in the county. Having attended the Board of Supervisors, many of the Board of Supervisors' meetings over the past several years, I recall sitting through lengthy reports at nearly every meeting detailing grants, projects, project proposals, contracts, fiber installation, matching funds, timelines, et cetera. The December 2020 meeting minutes include a statement that there is a potential for four to five internet service providers in the coming year or so for Patrick County. In the last year, there seems to be a noticeable slackening in the number of reports about progress and timelines and potential providers. Instead, we are hearing more complaints about declining levels of service and difficulties in obtaining service. CenturyLink is gone, and we are receiving mixed reports on how well Bright Speed is replacing them. We no longer see Mr. Steve Terry at every meeting with a lengthy report on progress. In the latter half of 2022, I spoke to the board about how Xfinity told me that their service was not available in my area, although their cable passes directly over my garage, and they park their trucks in my driveway to work on that cable. We have heard Mr. Roach describe Xfinity's quota of $45,000 to bring internet up his driveway. I have heard of neighbors turning to satellite providers with installation costs of $600 and up. I hope that the Board of Supervisors can revive enough interest in broadband for Patrick County to the extent that we can hear a monthly or even quarterly report on progress and timelines. If such reporting can't happen at these meetings, perhaps we can get progress reports sent to the newspapers or other outlets. I recall a quote that we would have broadband available to everyone in the county by the end of 2024. Well, it's 2023 now, and I hope that we don't have to wait until 2025 to hear if we're making any progress. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Derek Wagner, Mayo River.
All right. I'm chief of Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad, and tonight I'm here to talk about our billing practices. Over the last, I've been running with Jeb Stuart for 12 years, we've done remain soft billing, where the patient receives three bills, and after that, they receive nothing else. But tonight, I'm coming before you to let you know that our income for the year, which includes about 48,000 contributions from the county and the estate of the female that passed away in the Smith River District that left a fire and rescue, our total income for the year was $317,894, and our expenses was $313,962. With that being left, we had $3,932 left of net income for the year. That includes approximately $31,000 in insurance, $20,765 in ambulance repairs, plus our salaries and wages due to us providing, hopefully around-the-clock crews, day and night, for our service area. From April to part of January, we've billed out over $704,106 after your maximum liable from insurances, which is, that's what the insurance takes off the top of that. We've deducted $292,440, which leaves a $41666 remaining. To not bore you tonight, I didn't come up with a large presentation. Our leadership and Board of Directors has decided that it might be the time that we have to pursue different billing practices, whether we call it the hard billing. When we talk about hard billing, it would be we send a patient to collections, and then if they file a hardship justification, we'll review that and then bill a write-off, like most hospitals and other clinics does. They filed for hardship, and then we, if we decide that their hardship information meets our requirements, we will deduct the remaining balance. That's what we're coming to you tonight to get your blessing.
We'll consider it. Thank you, Derek.
All right, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Jessica Wilkins, and I reside in Meadows and Dan. I come to you this evening as an employee of Patrick County Fire and Rescue Station 8, a former employee of Jeb Stuart Volunteer Rescue Station 3, and former substitute teacher at Patrick County Public Schools. I say former employee due to the unofficial policy that I was advised exists stating that a county employee cannot work for multiple EMS agencies within Patrick County. To my knowledge, this rule was unofficially adopted from Henry County. At this time, I can work for Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad full-time and Patrick County Fire and EMS part-time. However, I cannot work for Patrick County Fire and EMS full-time and Jeb Stuart part-time. This is a concept I have yet to grasp. As a single mother and first responder of Patrick County, I'm sure you can imagine the financial struggle someone as myself faces from day to day. Due to the cost of living, inflation on the rise, and the minimal pay first responders receive, most of us find ourselves having to attain two or even three jobs to be able to live comfortably. Unfortunately, with that policy in place, that means a lot of us are having to travel outside of our county to seek employment within our career fields. With that being said, more money is having to be spent to travel farther, and revenue is being lost within our own county. I'm asking you tonight to please consider lifting this policy that not only impedes on myself and my fellow coworkers, but also hinders the lives of the other residents of our beloved community that I am proud to serve. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's all we had on the public comment period, and we had two, we had two on the public hearing for the revenue sharing of the solar energy projects. So let's get those. Mr. Bozenmeyer, you was on that one too.
Shouldn't we say that we're in a public hearing? We need to say...
All right, we'll open the public hearing then, and I'll read it. Patrick County Board of Supervisors hold a public hearing Monday, January 9, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. in the third floor courtroom of the Patrick County Veterans Memorial Building, Stewart, Virginia, for a revenue sharing for solar energy products, projects, and energy storage systems ordinance. Action will be taken at the meeting. If you would like to review the revenue sharing for solar and energy products and energy storage systems ordinance, you may do so at the county administration office. All right. And we had Mr. Kurt. Sorry about the confusion on the town.
Okay, and we've got it cleared up now, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bozenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the board regarding the proposed ordinance for revenue sharing for solar energy projects. The proposed ordinance permits Patrick County to assess, quote, "a revenue share of up to $1,400 per megawatt," but appears to omit two factors. Number one, how is revenue share defined? Is it a one-time charge, or an annual charge, or a monthly charge? I'm concerned that there is some ambiguity here, if not from a legal viewpoint, at least in public perception. Number two, how is the "up to" factor to be determined? Is this to be determined annually based on profitability of the facility? And is it something that will need to be reviewed and voted on each year by the Board of Supervisors? Upon comparing this proposed ordinance to the enabling legislation, legislation, Code of Virginia 58.1-2636, I note that the proposed Patrick County ordinance does not include subdivision A.2 of the State Act, which provides for an increase of the maximum amount of the revenue share of 10% every five years. Is there a reason why this provision has been omitted from the local...
Is there a reason why this provision has been omitted from the local ordinance? Prior to taking any action on this ordinance, I feel that it would be in the public interest for the board of supervisors to discuss in public session. One, how many solar energy projects and energy storage projects are currently proposed or permitted in the county, and their size in both megawatts and number of acres covered? Number two, how many such projects are known to be in preliminary discussion stages, to the extent that the county administration is aware of them? And number three, what is the proposed application of this revenue stream? Will it be set aside as a reserve for cleanup of the site after the useful life of the project is reached? Or will it be designated for the appropriate departments to cover inspection and review costs? Or will it simply be absorbed into the general fund? And how much money is expected in total? I hope that the board can address these issues prior to adoption of the ordinance, and then we'll amend the ordinance appropriately if needed. Thank you.
Thank you Kurt. Next was Mary Beth Clement, Blue Ridge, on solar.
My name is Mary Beth Clement, my maiden name is Martin, for those who went to school with me, and I call on my family's home place here in Patrick County. Although Patrick County is still my home, my official address is Pennsylvania County, and that's the county in which I vote. Patrick County is still the most beautiful rural county I've ever seen, with its mountains and valleys, creeks and ponds, acres of pastures and wide open spaces, and the always enjoyable view of the wildlife living off those natural resources. Such beauty is enjoyed and soaked in by many, either through recreation, hunting, fishing, or just sitting on the front porch and taking in what God has provided. As a voting resident of Pennsylvania County, I come to you this evening with words of great caution concerning the much-hyped solar farms and solar facilities. Pennsylvania County has fast become a hub of solar facility activity over the past few years, with approximately 20 projects approved that once complete will occupy over 10,000 acres. I, like many other voting residents, didn't pay too much attention when the first project came up, as it wasn't even in my district, and was located so far away from my district, being one of those out-of-sight, out-of-mind issues, because there was no direct impact to me. I, like many others, didn't even know what a solar farm was, or had any clue the word "farm" was a complete mischaracterization of what is now an industrial project. It wasn't until the summer when I drove through the northern part of Pennsylvania County that the shock and horror was felt. I can tell you, once beautiful country landscape and farmland is now littered with thousands upon thousands of solar panels, sitting on dirt, and for those completed projects, surrounded by high fencing with barbed wire that resembles the look of a prison. This beautiful landscape is also home to new utility towers and lines and what appear to be substation facilities. No description or picture of what I saw could possibly do it justice, and I urge both the Patrick County Board of Supervisors and members of the Planning Commission to take field trips to Pennsylvania County, and view for yourself the completed projects and projects under construction. Take time to look at the residents who now have this farm as their neighbor, and ask, ask yourself if you would want to live there. Ask yourself what really happens to the land underneath these panels, the water runoff into the streams, the water that soaks into the ground. Ask yourself if those residents decide to sell their properties, who will buy? Best guess is only the solar company, which will further expand their destruction of rural living. Ask yourself what happens to the wildlife that used to live off the land's natural resources that no longer exist. Ask yourself with this much acreage consumed by panels, towers, and structures, if the solar company goes bankrupt during the construction process, or the utility company decides to decommission an active site years down the road, what then? Again, I urge you to take this field trip, to put these solar facilities into perspective for Patrick County. Consider especially as these solar companies will offer you millions of dollars to the county to sacrifice its God-given already green resources. It's too late for Pennsylvania County, and many residents feel as though they've been sold out for these millions of dollars. There are residents that feel they were in no way given the complete information or picture of what a solar farm would be. There are some who now refer to the area as living in a panel planet. If a solar project is presented in Patrick County, I urge the Patrick County Board of Supervisors to go further in its communication and relationship with residents beyond public hearings and notices, and offer uptown hall meetings or other conversations in every district for any large-scale solar facility applications that are presented. Bring to those meetings information in the form of pictures of Pennsylvania County, and conversations with residents themselves of what these projects look like now, and what transpired during the construction phases, and what life is like after construction is complete. Also be transparent in what the solar, also be transparent in what the solar company offers to the county in return for the sacrifice of its beauty and natural resources. I thank you for your time this evening, and leave you with one thought. We've all enjoyed standing at Lover's Leap, and taking in the incredible view of the rural, rural landscape, pastures, and overall natural awe that is Lover's Leap. Now imagine one day, standing at Lover's Leap, and looking out over acres of solar panels, utility towers, lines, and substations, instead of the beauty we see today. Thank you.
That's all we had for signed up to speak on the public hearing, so we'll close it. Any of y'all got any comments? Well, we thank y'all, and we'll take everything under consideration. I reckon we're down to new business now. Resolution for Route 809, Epperson Lane, for termination of state maintenance of the And I guess we need a motion.
If there's no comment, I'll make a motion that do that.
Got a motion, need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Loach?
Aye.
Mr. Irwin?
Aye.
Ms. Berry?
Aye.
Okay, yeah, as have it, I vote aye also, close that one. And we had a presentation from Air Care next. I can't pronounce that word, but Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center.
Good evening, everyone, my name's John Blaylock, I'm Vice President of Emergency Medicine at Atrium Health. I brought with me tonight Mr. Billy Haynes, who's the program manager, and Mr. Mac Talbert, who's our Assistant Program Manager. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to talk a little about our program, sincerely appreciate all the support and partnership from Patrick County. I know y'all already know this, but you have a really amazing group of paid and volunteer EMS providers in the county, and it's been a true pleasure to work with them. What I was hoping to do today is first just share a little bit of history and background about the program, and then also pivot then to some of the ways that we believe that we add value to Patrick County and the citizens. So first, about Air Care, so we are a, what's considered a hospital-based program, it's a not-profit program, we do air medical and ground patient transport, we're based, or we are a part of Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, which is based in Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Within Winston, there's Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center, which is a Level 1 trauma center for adult and pediatric patients, we also have a burn center, and we've consistently been recognized over the years by US News and World Report. The Air Care program itself began in May of 1986, and I don't know if you know this, but the very first patient we ever flew was from Patrick County, and that was on May 17th, 1986. And so we've continued to serve the citizens of this community now almost 37 years. And a little bit about kind of our assets that we have, so we do have four helicopters, three bases, the closest base to Patrick County is at Blue Ridge Airport, which is super close by. We also have an airbase in Wilkesboro, North Carolina, and Lexington, North Carolina. We have adult and pediatric critical care ambulances, we have ALS ambulances as well, and we just started a basic life support ambulance as well, based in Winston. I did want to mention too, that while Atrium Wake Forest Baptist does run and manage the Air Care program, we do have, or we do partner with a company called Metro Aviation, who supplies our paramedics, our mechanics and pilots. And so they've been a great partner over the past five years that we've been with them, and they are an industry leader in quality and safety, and have been for the past 40 or so years. So that's a little bit about the program. I did want to talk too about the value that we feel like we bring to Patrick County, starting out with our teammates, our staff. So we have highly, highly trained paramedics and nurses, many of them are actually from Patrick County and surrounding counties. These folks are trained at our AMC by, you know, nationally-recognized emergency medicine providers. Our team's trained in transporting patients that require the most advanced level of transport care needed, those include things like balloon pumps and pellet devices, advanced ventilation and things like that. We were the first air medical program in the southeast to carry whole blood, which helps improve outcomes during traumas and things like that. We also carry plasma and red blood cells. We do work to get you a transport as soon as you request it, and so I believe we are the preferred provider in the county, so when you call our dispatch, you know, most of the times we are available, if we're not available, then we will work to find you the next closest transport. And what that does is kind of removes the burden off of your dispatch to kind of call around to find that next closest aircraft. We have a technology called IFR, Instrument Flight Rules, it's kind of like a GPS-type technology that allows us to fly in certain weather where you might not be able to otherwise. And so what that means for Patrick County is, if we're in those conditions, and it would be like fog, you know, that would otherwise prevent us from being able to fly, we could do things like arrange to meet a team, a ground team over at Blue Ridge Airport, where we do have an IFR approach, to be able to get in and then be able to fly the patient out. As a hospital-based program, we do have the ability to set our own billing rates and determine our own billing practices, and in this space, we feel like we are very competitive. And then lastly, as I mentioned, you know, we do employ several teammates from Patrick County and surrounding counties. So I'll close just by saying that Air Care has served Patrick County since 1986, from that first flight, and we've been at Blue Ridge Airport since 2012, so been there quite a while as well. And just again, appreciate the partnership, and look forward to continuing to work with stakeholders of the county to see how we can best serve, best serve your citizens. Without, I'll take any questions if you have them.
I'd just like to say thank.
We appreciate it, we appreciate y'all.
I have a quick comment too, just your user-friendly, like you said, when if our dispatch calls, and I've seen this many times firsthand, just the ease of use, and you guys take care of everything, and our dispatcher's doing 10 different things, that is a treat, and it's really, really helped things out, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you too, y'all save a lot of lives, especially since we don't have a hospital right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Down to the conflict interest forms, what do we need to do on that?
Those.
First of this, okay. Alright, in old business, we had RFP on hauling and disposal of waste.
Yes, and we've spoken with the vendors who have put in those bids, and it's January, and they would like to get their budget taken care of, and get us taken care of, so we need to take action tonight, and notify who we are going to choose as our vendor for the hauling and disposal of our waste.
Let's see if we can't put it off just a little bit longer, will they give us a little more period and still honor their contract, or their bid?
So we've lost one, I can tell you, we've lost one of our vendors now, only for time it's taken us. They're asking if we can, so that they can get their budget, that's their request.
Put it off, like, right?
We have.
Well, it's a new board, and a few ideas I'd still like to look at, can we put it off maybe till at least the next meeting, two weeks?
Two weeks, if the board so chooses to have their fourth meeting of the month, which would be 23rd of January, that's your request. If there is anything further, any options, ideas, share, that I can fill through the vendor, I would greatly appreciate.
I will.
Okay.
I reckon that's all we had for public comment, so go into executive session at this time. Got that, Mr. Irwin?
Pursuant to Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia, I move we enter into closed meeting for the limited purpose of discussing the appointment of specific individuals to the service, public service authority, solid waste committee, board of appeals, Department of Social Services pursuant to subsection A.1, and to discuss the assignment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of certain public employees all pursuant to subsection A.1, and to discuss the acquisition of real property for public person, purpose, where discussion and open meeting will adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy related to a piece of property located in the town of Stewart pursuant to subsection A.3.
Alright, we have a motion.
I make a motion, we go to closed session.
Alright.
Second.
Mr. Loach?
Aye.
Mr. Irwin?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye also.